... January 1st, 2014, for the city of Southfield. Madam President, Mr. Seibert?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Lantz and McHugh this evening? Mr. Frazier?
Here.
Mr. Frickas?
Here.
Ms. George?
Here.
You have six members of the council.
Thank you. There are a few items, Council, adjusting our agenda to... Item number one, item number seven will be removed from the agenda to a later date. We're taking item number six and we want to make that item number three. So, item number one will be the presentation regarding the nonprofit. Number two will be the development of initiatives. Item number three will be the destruction of cable television franchise. And then, number four is the same for five. And moving forward. The first item is the presentation regarding the Southfield nonprofit housing corporation's refinancing of McDonald Tower and River Park Place.
Madam President, and the council, I have tonight the development team I'd like to present to the city. Several months ago, we outlined our activities for refinancing McDonald Towers and River Park Place. If you recall, we have mortgages that are due. We're very focused on how we preserve the affordability of those units. I'd like to introduce our team. We have Joe Kavir, who is with the Southfield Nonprofit Board.
Good evening.
He is with the firm of Pentacover and Cobalak. He is the legal attorney on that. We have Larry Tisdale, who is our partner in the project, and tonight will be presenting what we're outlining and the ask of what we will need from the city in the immediate and near future. As soon as...and our first ask will be the adoption of a pilot ordinance, that is, a payment in lieu of taxes ordinance, to be presented to council on January 27. And then Cheryl, and I'm going to have her help me out with her last name.
Cheryl Alderman.
And if you folks want to work your way into the podium. We also have a couple of boards that I'll put on the last show at the site. And Cheryl has a one-page handout that we're going to pass out to some talking points.
Where's Cheryl at?
Oh, there you are. She's coming way back there, and then they go up there.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
The...what we're asking for council's consideration tonight, and actually, I don't believe you'll be acting on it, because this would be on a subsequent agenda, but we're asking for the adoption of what's called a pilot ordinance. And I'll discuss that in a moment. But just by way of background, the Board of Directors at the Southfield Nonprofit has been looking at ways to not only maintain, but also to improve the property for the residents who live there and for the overall city of Southfield. In the past year, they've instituted a new management team, and things are improving there. But as part of...in reviewing what needs to be done and planning for the future, the board recognizes that they're going to have to refinance some existing loans, which are going to be due in a few years. And also, so as part of that, they've looked into various options and consulted with various people, and as a result of that, has met with Lark Properties, Larry Tisdale, who's, I believe he's from Southfield, and is originally from Southfield. And he's very experienced in maintaining properties. He owns various properties. He has an established track record with HUD and MISTDA. And as a result of that, the Southfield Nonprofit Board is partnering with his entity to refinance the property, as well as convey the property to a new entity, which Southfield's still going to be...the nonprofit's still going to be involved in, but it's also going to provide some funds for the Southfield Nonprofit to get involved with other endeavors for the betterment of the community. So, it's with these overall goals that this planning's come together. So, this body does not have to approve this transaction, but as part of the financing, we are applying with the state of Michigan to obtain tax credits. Now, there's various scoring points that the state looks at in order to award these tax credits. And one of these points is the idea of having a pilot. Now, what a pilot is, is that stands for payment in lieu of taxes. Currently, these properties are considered governmental properties, and they do not pay any taxes whatsoever. A pilot has the effect of the property paying the fee to the city. And in this instance, we're looking for 4% of shelter rent. Now, the law does permit this amount to be higher, but we're asking for 4% because by using this amount, this will help us score or garner favor with the state of Michigan in order to get these tax credits approved. So, that's why we're asking for this 4% tax credit. Now, and I'm going to also, before I get into too many details, Larry's even better versed at this than I am, so I'm going to...you want to add to that?
Sure.
Thanks, Joe. I guess Joe was giving a brief outline of what the ask is going to be, but what I'd like to do first is tell you what the benefits to the city are in this transaction, if MISTDA is so inclined to give us these tax credits based upon our competitive scoring. The proceeds from the transaction to the nonprofit, which can be used for other endeavors that the nonprofit has, will be somewhere between $3 to $4 million on McDonald Tower and River Park Place, somewhere between $4.5 and $5.5 million. So, on the high side, that's about $9.5 million of proceeds to the nonprofit. In addition to that, the city currently has a lease, or leasing space in the property. And I believe the annual payments are upwards of $120,000?
$160,000.
$160,000. That goes away. City will not have to pay $160,000 a year anymore. The property will be self-sufficient and will be able to carry on on its own some of those endeavors that that $160,000 was doing for the property. In addition to that, right now, the property...as Joe said, the properties are not paying any taxes at all. On McDonald Tower, because it was financed with what's called a Section 236 FHA loan, it is...it can get full tax abatement. And the city will be reimbursed 100% of the dollars on ad valorem taxes from the state. This is legislation signed by Governor Granholm the year before she left office. So, the ask...what we're asking for is, as Joe said, a 4% of net shelter rent on the River Park Place property. So, it's only one of the two properties. Now, that's all...there's the ask and all the good stuff financially. Here are some of the good things that'll happen to the property and the residents who live there will benefit from them. These are just items from a quick walkthrough that was done a week ago. And then, there's a wish list that's been compiled by the nonprofit board and management. And depending upon the ultimate dollars will be the final scope, so I don't want to say this is it. But here are some of the items. Keep in mind that the property is 30 years plus and has never gone through a repositioning, recapitalization, major rehab. It's tired. It needs a lot of work. So, some of the items are roof replacement, HVAC upgrades, the parking lot needs to be redone, common hall upgrades with lighting, carpeting, possibly unit doors, kitchen upgrades, cabinets, countertops. I believe they just received refrigerators, so we probably will not be doing new refrigerators. Unit carpet paint, vanities in the bathrooms. Windows. I'm not sure one of the buildings might have had windows replaced, but no. Okay, windows. That's the same for both properties. Now, some of the other items that are on the list, because we're going to have roughly $30,000 a unit spent, somewhere between $20,000 and $30,000 a unit spent. And those dollars will be generated through the sale of these tax credits that MISTDA hopefully will get the properties. And those tax credits are typically purchased by Fortune 500 companies. Bank of America's a big purchaser, Comerica Bank, Berkshire Hathaway purchases tax credits, Chase. This third, most of the major financial institutions invest in affordable housing because it's a mandate through what's called Community Reinvestment Act. And these properties are located in a big Community Reinvestment Act area where banks have to invest some of their dollars. So, pool fencing, pool deck, townhome furnaces, we went through that. Update for code for...I don't believe we have smoke detectors in every bathroom and in the living areas. There must be...they're in bedrooms. There must be smoke detectors in the bathrooms and in the living areas. New grab bars, so that residents will have an easier time walking. I said better lighting, but coordinating the lighting with the carpeting, because elderly people have a hard time seeing and getting confused sometimes. Security cameras, new automatic doors, a new fob key system, which is really good for security, because if a resident loses a fob, you just take it off the computer, and it doesn't work anymore. So, if someone steals a fob, they're not getting into the building. Redoing the community space, the fiction, the area where the nonprofit has its monthly or bimonthly meetings, redo those areas. New furniture. And the list goes on and on. And part of the job is...that we'll do is we'll sit down with the board, and we will determine what the priorities are and how to allocate the dollars. And this will be a property and a project that the city will be proud of. And I think it's a win-win situation on all fronts. And I'm excited about it. And again, the reason we need the 4% is simply because it's 10 points versus zero points. And the competition for tax credits, usually, there's one project that gets awarded tax credits for every four projects that apply. And that's the world we're living in. So, is there any questions, Cheryl, or anything? No?
No. No, I would just...just to reiterate, this is a competitive process. There are many, very...there's a lot of worthwhile projects out there, but this is going to help make the Southfield project, give some extra points and greatly increase the odds of us being awarded these tax credits.
Now, on the McDonald Tower project that gets a full abatement exemption, I know I can send the information to. It's basically the assessor signs a form, and the treasury signs off on it, and every year, the property...the assessor or the treasurer bills the property and the state reimburses. We have four properties or three?
Three properties.
Three properties that we do that with right now.
Madam President, let me just add a couple of comments. Two years ago, Mr. Schreit and I outlined a plan that would kind of begin the restructuring of the nonprofit with the Housing Commission. We were slowly working towards it, the privatization, new management. We're bringing our costs down per unit from almost $6,000 per unit down to about $4,500 per unit, in line with industry norms. Really like, you know, the city, you know, the big prize, obviously, today you're receiving nothing. The pilot, you'll receive something. The legislation, Governor Granholm, McDonald Towers, will be on the tax roll for the first time in our history. The renovation will be preserving the affordability. But the real prize in this, and I think this some way is tied to the city's master plan, and you're going to hear a lot of discussion about the need to do more analysis of the housing. If we learned anything through the foreclosure crisis, we have our single-family stock of roughly $18,000, our multifamily stock of $17,000 units. $6,000 of those are condominiums. What we have here is a tremendous opportunity for the city to do some capacity building and using a federal tool that will bring these tax credits to the city of Southfield and make new investment. The fact of the matter is, I wish we had built this capacity five, six years ago in restructuring the board, where now we've got a talent pool of people that will focus on these properties initially. But what I'm really excited about is if we're successful, having that kind of money for the nonprofit, which ultimately works an agenda of this city council to take on other housing matters. And, you know, we've all have beat our heads about several things on the inside of the city. If we had this capacity, we might be able to better wrestle with some of those issues facing us. And then, I just want to point out the land that the nonprofit owns. And this might be a joint venture with another entity, one of our faith-based organizations in the community. The property we're talking about right now is just right here. But very quietly, I think the Southfield Nonprofit, for the last 10, 12 years, has been doing dismemberage and acquisition. As part of the scoring process and to optimize points, we have to develop a revitalization plan. We have the city planner, our Parks and Rec landscape architect, Mary Tyler, our stormwater person, and another Sarah from our planning staff. But we're looking at developing a subarea plan for this area that encompasses Toll Bridge, this area that talks about what's happening in this area. Again, the link to this, to the master plan, is if the master plan is in process, in the application, we can tell MISTDA that this is a subarea plan of our master plan. And we'll be able to represent that that subarea plan in the next year, 18 months, will be in front of city council. But we've got a group working on this. This is part of...you know, our Parks and Rec plan supports what's happening along the Rouge. It actually goes up to 12 Mile Lakes here. At a future date, we'll be asking the city to take back some of this property along here. Here's where a lot of our stormwater. In December, we had a lot of discussion about the TAF grant. Well, here's one of our best demonstration stormwater projects that's won a lot of recognition for the city. All of that begins to tell a story. When you begin to look at where this city is invested, our community development block grants, the largest, when you get to the HUD mapping site, the majority of our funds the last 20 years have been focused on this one corner. So, that, again, that begins to tell the story. So, I want council to know that you'll hear some of staff talking about the subarea plan. There is a link to the master plan. I think the real big prize for us, though, is that the capital investment in this property, preserving the affordability of the property, and then having an entity in Southfield that ultimately works our agenda and maybe making something better happen with that property. And who knows? Maybe some of that planning is, maybe there's another senior community here, another housing opportunity that's envisioned here. And what we've talked about in the subarea plan is, maybe we'll come up with four or five different concepts, just to keep people thinking about that. But if we master this, we may be taking on another project in the next two to three years to the north of us, or perhaps there's an opportunity. I know during the foreclosure crisis, three properties, Fannie Mae was looking for nonprofit entities to take on multifamily properties in Southfield. One was sought in place apartments. We just certainly weren't in the position at the time with the capacity to tackle that type of project. So, with the new private manager, some new goals, I think it's a great opportunity for us.
Could you give us the key to this grant in terms of the yellow, the blue, the brown, the green?
The yellow is owned by the nonprofit. The brown is owned by the nonprofit as well. And then, the blue is owned by the city. Now, some of the cities may be owned by community development block grant, so if the property were to sell, we'd have to do an appraisal, and the money would go back into CBGG. Some of them, I don't think there are any encumbrances, so if the property were to sell, it'd be part of a larger project, the city would also have a windfall there.
Any questions, Chuck? Mr. Frazier?
A couple of questions. If I understood the conversation between both ends of the table, currently, we pay $160,000 rent.
Parks and Rec has cost incurred to the space.
Yes. And we won't be paying that?
No.
Okay. What happens to the programs and the people that are part of Parks and Rec that are over there now?
That needs to be planned and coordinated. There was some discussion about bringing them back into city. And, you know, frankly, I'll tip my hat, I'd like to think that we'll ask the Southfield Nonprofit to help us figure that out. Perhaps the Southfield Nonprofit, you know, if you read their role and mission, it supports enough of senior activities, that maybe there's an activity center here. Or, in our envisioning for the larger property to the north, maybe there's another project that comes on, and maybe, and maybe is the optimal word here, maybe there's another senior center there. For years, the Southfield Nonprofit Board talked about building a senior center on some of that land that was acquired. Again, that needs to be aligned with the Parks and Rec plan as approved by city council and put it there. And I think we're all...our challenge for the next year and a half will probably be, what is our restructured city going to look like since the Great Recession or the decline of our tax base?
Okay. A few months ago, we made a decision to spend some money on the store over there. Was that our money? Was that the...
That was a private entity's.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about that. I know there's a senior center over there, and I've...over the years, I've been part of activities that are over there. It seems to me that senior center over there never really worked. I don't know if just sprucing it up is going to make it work, or if there's something else that needs to be done in order to make it more attractive for the people that live there and the folks that come from outside.
I think part of the...
Go ahead.
Part of what's going on is within the last six months, eight months, professional management team has been brought on, who has experience in senior housing, independent senior housing, and aging in place. And that's what they do. They can bring on an activities director.
Okay.
And they do programming, and they have the ability to create excitement. I mean, it doesn't work all the time.
Sure.
May I just answer your question? We've hired a half-time person, actually, full-time. She speaks Arabic. And so, she's being released half-time to plan activities for the center.
Okay.
For the residents of the three boroughs.
Okay.
And that's the goal of the nonprofit board.
Okay. So, that starts...
Right.
That'll get at least a portion of the folks that live there to fulfill Ken's [inaudible]. We also had a...that the council over there, that the...
Central owner?
Should it still stay over there or not? Or is that part of the people that come back?
We still have a contract with the nonprofit. I don't think that's changed. Where we're...you're paying...you're reimbursing 90% of the social workers' costs.
That is correct. And that is still in place. It's not to say that in the future that we be examined, because one of the issues we're having as a nonprofit becomes an accounting issue with our monitoring entities, is that the...when you go through the numbers, we're...and by staff's own admission, we're picking up 90% of the costs, but maybe only utilizing 40% of the services. So, there's got...there might be a realignment. However, the city receives a payment that was negotiated, a pilot payment, not by way of ordinance, but through a consent decree from Metalcrust. The Southfield Nonprofit receives that, and that $32,000 to $34,000 is part of what we use to make that payment.
Okay.
With also the option to get grant money, totally fund...there's a program, and this is totally funded for social workers. So, the city or the nonprofit wouldn't pay for it. But we're in a contract this year, and this is a union employee. So, we're rolling with this year, we're just leaving her in place. When we had her in, she is serving many more people through human services than the residents of the building, yet the nonprofit is paying for it.
Okay. One of the other things that I experienced when I was active over at some programs is that it seems as if when the buildings were built, the parking was typically one car per unit or less than one car per unit. And some of the units now have more than one car. So, there's always been a parking concern, and the people that live there were always grumbling when people from the outside, because there never were enough parking places for you. I don't know if that's going to be taken into consideration at all when you're remodeling the building or doing some work.
It's not the time. I mean, if that's an issue, we need to look at it.
It has been an issue right off the bat. And the last thing is, this sounds like a picky only thing, but I just remodeled. Did some remodeling in our homes. You're going to do...you say you're going to spend around $30,000 per unit. Do the units today have comfort height toilets? If not, if not, they should have, because we're talking about...we're talking about senior people. Right?
No. They don't?
Okay. That's one thing that should make a lot of difference. Okay, thank you.
Well, just going to help Myron answer some questions.
It's not clear to me, when we're talking about the senior center, if we're talking about senior center at McDonald Towers just for the seniors that live in the nonprofit housing? Because the criticisms I've heard, when we talk about senior center, where should it be? Should it be there? Should it be here? Should it be at different places? And the comments that I've heard from the people that don't live there is that they don't want to go to a, what they consider a low-class, poverty-stricken, and ethnically diverse, you know, or as much as known to English, that's...they don't feel comfortable going there. And I think they feel, I hate to say this, but it's beneath them. You know, there's that social strata issue. So, are we talking about something just for McDonald Towers, which they need, and their own senior center? But if we're talking about...
The staff person I mentioned, that would be just for Woodbridge, McDonald Towers, and River Park Place.
Okay.
Buildings that the nonprofit oversees.
Okay.
And the person's been hired.
Okay, oh, good.
And we had a board meeting this afternoon, and we discussed starting to get her rolling on activities.
Well, they definitely need it, but it's not meant to be different places for the city.
No, but it's for the building.
Good, thank you.
Mr. President, if you could go, I'm good. Um, I do have a few questions. You mentioned if it's approved by the state, what's the, the likelihood of us getting this approved? Is it based upon the pilot being, the city accepting a pilot?
There are numerous attributes that the property has to have to score points and those who get the highest points, with some caveats, win. They're the winners, they get the credits. We've done preliminary scoring on both of these projects. Based on the last funding round, McDonald Towers should not have a problem getting the credits. River Park Place is kind of on the cusp. We don't know. We won't know till probably May fifteenth, application due date is February fifteenth. Now, if the project does not get these credits, there is another credit that is eligible, we're eligible for. It's a much lower amount of credit, which means we can raise a lot less capital. So we'll change the economics of the transaction, there'll be less proceeds. We may have to do a little less work, but, um, it, it can get done. That's why we're, we're, we're going for the night for the first round for both projects.
Larry, can you just, a basic primer of how the credit works, a nine percent credit brings in how much for your, for how many years?
Let me give you the rationale for the whole, the whole program, because it might make some sense. The program was initiated back in nineteen eighty-six when the Tax Act changed and took away accelerated depreciation, all sorts of goodies for, for affordable housing. Congress at that time recognized that there needed to be an affordable housing program and HUD was kind of being diminished at the time. So a social driver through the tax code was how do you incentivize developers to develop affordable housing that have, that would have low rents? Um, how, how do you make sure that owners will keep the rents low and, and low, lower income levels? You know, which is a misnomer, because two-thirds of the people who live in Oakland County qualify for this housing. But it, it is what it, sixty percent of median income. Um, at any rate, so the way it was set up is developers are entitled to a development fee. They must rent to, at income levels at or below sixty percent median income and the rents are set at certain levels. That's the program. Uh, and it kind of has worked very well. It's the longest-running production program for affordable housing the U.S. has ever had. It's bipartisan, it's public-private partnership, um, and, uh, the federal government allocates these credits to the state. The state allocates the credits to the developers or partnerships based on criteria set up by the states within guidelines set up by the federal government. It, well, it kind of is, I try to, a while later.
So a nine percent, every million dollars?
So let's go through the, the two parts. The, the, there are two credits. One is called a nine percent credit, which is basically equal to nine percent of your construction costs. And that is the competitive, very competitive credit. There's another one, which is based on tax exempt bond financing, which is more readily available than the credit, the, the specific tax credit program. And those are four percent. So they're equal to four percent of your construction costs, which is significantly lower. And those credits have value. So whether it's a four percent or a nine percent, that credit is, let's say you have a ten million dollar property. On a nine percent credit, that's nine hundred thousand dollars of credit. Well, you get that credit for ten years. So that's nine million of credit. And the value of that credit in the marketplace right now is around eighty-seven cents. So you're talking about seven, eight million dollars of capital being able to come into the property to do all the rehab, to pay for the acquisitions, to do all the stuff that needs to be done. Four percent is calculated the same way, it depends on your credit, but it's only four percent of that ten million or four hundred thousand dollars. Four million dollars, eighty-seven cents of that is considerably less.
Now, um, should this program be accepted, should McDonald Towers and River Park be accepted and granted to the private? When would the work begin?
Very good question. The program that we anticipate using is, uh, HUD, FHA two twenty-one V four as a financing mechanism. And those, that program takes roughly eight months to process. It would take a month or two. Uh, and that would not start in earnest until the May fifteenth, till we find out if we have credits. If we don't get the credits, then the financing mechanism has to change because we have to do a tax exempt bond execution, which would change the program.
Lastly, I do agree with, um, Mr. Frazier in terms of the parking doesn't need to be addressed in any kind of way, that you can get more parking on there.
I would imagine with the, there's plenty of space there, it's just a matter of how...
Part of the land to the north and this is, this is the time to deal with it. The capital funds are there to deal with it. Uh, and then our documents will make sure we're, we're in compliance as well.
Should we have the survey or?
Yep.
Cut that out.
All right, so this, this will come back to us on our regular meeting on January twenty.
We will have a draft ordinance of a pilot and we may want to act it as an emergency if possible.
If you're, if you're running this for time, right, instead of waiting, then it wouldn't be, if it were to do in January meeting, that it couldn't be, it couldn't be enacted from February meeting, that's too late. You need to have an application by the fifteenth?
Fourteenth is the Friday, the fourteenth.
On the twenty-seventh, so it's really...
You can do it in November.
It might as well be filled with, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, economic development initiative request from Marsh and McLean Company. Shelley, is that you or is it?
Yes, it's me.
Madam President, uh, as part of our continued account development initiatives, uh, we have a request that Mr. Freeman will be presenting to the council for a three-twenty tax abatement.
Um, hello, good evening, everybody. Due to the change in calendar, um, the clients, um, Marsh and McLennan, were, were planning on coming in last week and they had to re, you know, obviously recancel them. Um, if things go forward, they will be at the regular council meeting, but I am gonna present the presentation. All right. Again, um, as Mr. Norris stated, we have received a request to, um, to partner with Marsh and McLennan Companies for a tax abatement. Marsh and McLennan, they are a global professional service firm that offers clients advice and solutions in areas of risk, strategy and human capital. They're the parent company of four companies, Marsh, Guy Carpenter, Mercer and Oliver Wyman. Marsh and Guy Carpenter are risk and insurance services, while Mercer and Oliver Wyman are consulting firms. Marsh and McLennan Companies, through Marsh and Mercer, have been in the Detroit market for over thirty-five years with a hundred and seventy-four, a hundred and seventy-five people located at the Renaissance Center. Um, as you can see, they have, um, they're top-leading risk management investment company and they service a large, um, number of Detroit entities. Sixty-nine percent of the tax publicly-held companies, fifty-three percent of Detroit's largest hospitals and, um, hospital companies and twenty-two percent of the tax private, um, companies. And when they say Detroit, they mean the Detroit market, the Detroit region. Um, currently, they are located at the Renaissance Center. They are looking to relocate to One Town Square. They're looking to take a floor and a half in that building or just over twenty-seven thousand square feet. Why are they moving to Southfield? Um, the, the facility that they're locating in is a Class A-plus building. Um, the owners have put a significant amount of resources into that building, it's outstanding. Um, they're looking to have a safer environment for their colleagues and clients. Obviously, there's lower taxes in the city, um, the excellent seaway asset, the elimination of parking fees as well as, um, their colleagues live within this market. Um, Marsh and Mercer, um, are making a six-point-three million dollar investment in their location. Um, and they'll be signing over a ten-year lease at the facility. Um, and you, and you can see some of the reasons why they're looking to locate here, obviously for client entertainment. They'll be utilizing our hotels, our restaurants and facilities, our restaurants. Um, this will help diversify our, um, base of businesses. We do have a strong number of insurance companies, but, you know, it's nice to have a steady base with, on the fluctuation in the, the auto market. Um, this will help clarify, you know, help us over the, um, different times in the, um, as business fluctuates. Um, as I stated, they're making a six-point-three million dollar investment. Of that one point three is personal property. So we, we're looking to get, um, to assist them with a three-year abatement. They'll make, be making their entire investment upfront in the first year. And as you can see, the city's portion is, um, will total about seventy-five thousand dollars. With the first year at thirty thousand, then twenty-four, then twenty thousand in investment. Again, here is, um, just a layout of where they're going to be located in One Town Square on the tenth and the eleventh floors. Um, Marsh, I believe is taking, the, the two companies are sharing the space, but I believe, um, a significant portion will be of Marsh, about seventy-five percent, and then, um, twenty-five percent will be Mercer employees. And as you can see, that they plan on using, um, local contractors and construction groups. Yeah, so it's really gonna get a lot to our city center. Um, they wanted to share some of the businesses that they represent. Um, as you can see, several of them are Southfield businesses. This company is also extremely charitable and they do some work with, um, local charities and they are very open to, um, being more involved with our community at a wide variety of levels. Um, they are planning on joining the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. I know it's a big issue, Myron, which is very important. Um, as well, they, currently, they're not, um, planning on hiring additional people. They are relocating their hundred and seventy-five people to the city, but they do fully intend on utilizing, uh, the Southfield Career Center moving forward. Um, and they do intend to grow at the location, um, they just do not have specific numbers at, at this time. And again, this will really just help, um, uh, create a stronger presence in our city center area. A hundred and seventy, um, seventy-five very highly-paid employees coming into the city center will be a big attraction for all the businesses and, you know, the presentation.
Yeah, what's the, what's the vacancy at One Town Square?
Um, I believe it was around, um, eighty, uh, about twenty percent.
Okay.
Yeah. So they've been very aggressive, the whole area's been very aggressive and, um, I know that they've made a significant investment and I think some of you were at, uh, one of the last grand openings. You saw the, the beautiful fitness room that they put in, they put in some new conference space. Um, yeah, definitely, the amount of money that they, you know, to support gastronomy.
Yeah, I guess I, I'll have some questions for them when they come about the jobs and if they, what their vision is to grow. If there's nothing specific yet, um, but, you know, if, if they're helping One Town Square remain occupied given the, 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 they've put into the property, this is a...
I think Councilman Moss asked an optimal question, because our strategy is that how do we impact or decrease the tax appeals? And what we said is by increasing our occupancy. I mean, on every tax appeal, they cite vacancy as a reason. Our numbers, according to Coast, uh, we're trending in the right direction. But overall, Shelley, can you speak to our overall occupancy? You just ran some numbers last week.
I think, you know, um, we're about twenty-four to twenty-five percent vacancy. And again, we have a significant amount of space. And I tell you, uh, we've been working very aggressively with the Detroit Regional Chamber and I have a large user that's looking for some space. I was just touring a lot of buildings today and, um, you know, walking through some of these buildings, there, there's a lot of ghost space, so it's vacant, it's somewhat leased and the leases are coming up and there's a lot of empty space in a lot of buildings. And so, you know, while we keep making good efforts and there are people coming, we've, we've heard about people coming in, looking for space. There's a tremendous amount of space available right now and, um, you know, some of the areas around here.
And a lot coming on in, at Ford in Detroit, new buildings being built.
People continue to, to downsize their space. Um, I know a lot of us have family members or people who are friendly with other people in different companies, so we know how people are very mobile in their work environment now. And so a lot of companies might be renting space and, um, their employees are on the road most of the time, so they're really hoteling and sharing a lot of space, uh, more often than not. And so a lot of people are looking for these big open floors, floor plans, so people can share space and people don't really have their own offices so much anymore. They're really just bringing their computers in and plugging into whatever space is available. And so while I was touring today, it was pretty evident that there's a lot of space available in, in, around this area. And so, um, you know, this is a great win for us to get a company that wants to relocate from the city of Detroit. We've seen a lot of people go in the opposite direction. And so this is a very positive thing for us. And so, um, you know, but there, again, there's a lot of competition for us. There's a lot of really nice space in our surrounding communities too. And so we, we really still have to stay in fighting position, I would say.
Yeah, uh, in your presentation, you said that, that there'll be some very highly compensated folks that are moving in here, which will be attracted to other, other businesses. Um, my question is, what are we gonna do to amplify that kind of thing and make sure that, uh, they know that they've made the right decision to move to Southfield, which will also, uh, open the, the door perhaps for other people to make decisions? Because we've had a lot of people move in and it was kind of like, oh, thanks for being here. And then you never, we never say anything anymore. Um, the, the one that I drive by at least one time every day, well, twice, because I go home to. Uh, and that's the new, uh, cooking place there, the old AAA building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, that, yeah, the culinary arts place. I mean, that is neat, I mean, what, what they're doing in there. But how many people in Southfield really know what's going on? And maybe we have to partner with the Chamber of Commerce, but, uh, somebody needs to really...
I'd, I'd like to help with the answer. Um, so we've been working in several different fronts. One, um, you know, Cable, Cable's here and they have a dedicated person who works with me and the business community, Sarah Heinz. She's out at Alda Grande opening. She still has, uh, we've kind of reformatted the show, it's called Business Matters. It's on our cable station, it's on Facebook. Um, we have a YouTube station, Cable has a YouTube station. They were at the, the Great Lakes Culinary Institute, they, they did a video on that, it's on cable right now.
Just to let you know, we're gonna be doing a show with them, a cooking show with them, so it'll be on regularly.
Okay, now that's, that's one, that's what I'm talking about.
No, for other ones, I'm going.
This is a, a standing practice that we have to share information with people through our chamber if they decide to join the chamber, because it is a separate organization. Um, the city has employed the services of a marketing company to help with the city center area. We're looking to work with our community relations to, to get out the word for everybody in a stronger way. I agree, it's just, you know, there's not the best, it's not always the best. I agree, you know, there's not always the best. Also, Mayor Lawrence has suggested that we have an open house to welcome them and to have a continued dialogue with these companies that come in. I do have to say, you know, we can make our best efforts to be out and connect with them, but a lot of these people, again, they're all, it's hard to pin them down, because they're all global and running around on a regular basis. And so, you know, they definitely appreciate us connecting with them, but they also appreciate us just being here and having a beautiful environment for them to locate in and not necessarily have ongoing dialogues with us, because a lot of the people are really out and about us, you know, it's hard to connect with them anyway.
And I know, when you say that, we're in competition with other communities around us, and that's true. But if we can do something that makes them feel like they're really wanted here in Southfield, maybe they will quit looking at the other communities and they come to some of our buildings that we have that are, the kind of buildings that they're looking for also.
Sure, sure. I just want to add that, you know, the Detroit Chamber, they have, they had a relationship with Oakland County, and they've had some issues with that relationship, so they're expressing, they have a separate partnership group that we have not been permitted to participate in in the past because of their connection strictly with Oakland County. So they've asked, we're trying to get into this kind of private group for lead generation, and so that's something we've been working with. We've had a couple of really great projects that I've been working with them recently, and they had some collectors come into town, and I was able to speak at two different groups last week. And so, we're hoping that we can get involved on a more regular basis with that entity. They're really thinking of the lead generators of new companies coming into the state of Michigan. And so, you know, I've been working with them to get that formalized, because that's a fast way to get, you know, new people that are looking for space into the area.
Okay, thanks.
I actually just wanted to comment on what Shelley was bringing up. The fact of the matter is, I think Councilman Fraser was talking, speaking to our messaging. What is the message we're carrying out, you know, we're open for business? I think one of the challenges Southfield has, as well as all of, and I think a lot of the discussion about Chris Patterson and the New Yorker article, really highlights this region needing to work together and how we focus and how we make, there's this mindset that the pie is finite in size. But the fact of the matter is, southeastern Michigan has economic competitiveness over other parts of the country. You know, Mr. Schret frequently talked, spoke about the weather and cost of living. We need to get that message out there. Council took some actions in your, in the budget you adopted this year with the first half million dollar economic development, as well as your action in December where you put additional funds into economic development. Staff now needs to come back, and, you know, what does that messaging look like? What is that delivery vehicle going to be? Ms. Freeman, has, this rift between the Detroit Chamber and Oakland County has presented a real opportunity for us, because in the past, we were at the mercy of a county to give, let out those leads. They now have approached, just so Council relatives, you know, we're gonna join that group. It's within parameters that we can afford. They've also asked Troy, Auburn Hills, and the others. But we're seeing more activity since this started in end of November.
Right.
And we've seen more leads and generations than we were getting from Oakland County. Keep in mind...
And from the state.
This has always been one of the challenges, why we want to be a player at the table. The state looks at the state, the county looks at the entire county. We've got to be there. Now, relative to part of the messaging, I've had conversations with Ann Arbor Spark that they're about to embark on a campaign promoting all southeastern Michigan. We've got to be at the table, because we do have a very, you know, as expensive as our businesses say it is to do, we are still far more competitive than the East Coast, the West Coast. We've got a message to get there. We don't have 300 days of sunshine like they do in certain parts of the country, but we've got some real advantages, and we've got to get that message out there. And every one of these companies that make the decision to come into Southfield, they're actually talking about, they're the people who sell our message.
Yeah.
I mean, someone who's been in the red seat is coming here. The Great Lakes Culinary Institute, they were pretty much tossed out of Cass Avenue.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, when you talk to Goldman...
If you were a donor, if you were at the state, at the annual breakfast, donor gave a beautiful reason. He was up there, 500 people, his lease was off, he was looking in Detroit as the cool place to be. He said, this is his home, he wants to renew his lease for a long term, and all the reasons that, you know, Fred mentioned, the...
Staff holds it to come back to council and that messaging delivery. And, you know, I really think that's where Mr. Schret was going with the money that was put in December. I know the conversations we had at the end of the year, and he want, you know, where the economy is, it's now time to launch that.
So would like a Rule 10, the legislation for the day you come to the January 27 council meeting, for three public hearings.
Yeah, you know, talking about marketing, talking about, you know, selling the city to those outside of the city. I think we should absolutely connect everybody who are, you know, we talk about the struggle about tax abatements and the merit for them, but anyone who's granted a tax abatement should, you know, partner up with our cable department and film something that says, this is the reason why we chose Southfield. And each time we do this, you know, you don't just have the regular people saying, you know, tax abatements aren't bad, we're just giving away money, but there actually is a payoff to it that we promote with a marketing campaign and say, listen, we're growing our local economy here through tax abatements. And, you know, here are the numbers about why, you know, we want to attract business, but here's anecdotal people also telling the story for us and being our partners out there. So I would love to see anyone who, you know, comes with that request, be connected right to the cable department. Put that up on the website, put that up on Facebook, you know, and social media to repeat over and over again, so we can get that message out there.
Well, look at that item that was in our package by Denso.
Yeah.
You know, and we keep hearing, oh, we give the money away to Denso.
Yeah, yeah.
Look at the money Denso's spending now.
Exactly right, exactly right.
I just, I stopped by the auto show at their food, and they, it was industry days, and they were just, these were not the executives, like the vice president, so excited about them.
Yeah, yeah.
Just happy to be there, and kind of blushing at the guys, and you named it Denso Drive, you really meant it, right? You're taking over. And they kind of smiled, said, this is where to come, so they're growing.
That's great.
So that makes us feel good.
Okay, so you're looking for a Rule 10.
Madam Chair, I move a Rule 10 to council for the creation of 198 district, and to have the 328 tax abatement on the meeting of January 27.
Support. I've seen the one.
Ah, there you go.
Need a real fit.
So we have a motion for a Bill 10 by a motion to council supported by Mr. Fraser. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that the meeting be set for January 27.
Support, George.
We have a motion by Councilman, supported by Councilman Moss, to get the meeting, the public hearing for January 27, 2014, for the creation of 198 district, 328 tax abatement. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Does that cover all, you know, the...
Yeah, the public hearings.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on our agenda will be for discussion of the cable television franchise. Are you gonna read that?
Oh, I will. That award. I want to just bring to council the attention that the cable television franchise with Comcast is due to expire on March 8 of 2014. Comcast has asked that the franchise be extended. The city in response to that request has done several things. One of the major things it's done at this point is to conduct this public forum that occurred back in December. And at that time, we were attempting to ascertain what the needs of the community were, as well as residents, businesses, and the city itself, as any department in terms of cable television. And within that discussion, a couple of things became pretty clear. First was that the INET is a significant component of this city's infrastructure. It's the way that we communicate, and we have, you know, 1920 satellite locations that are all connected by what's called this institutional network, this INET. All of our communication, our data, our photographs, everything goes across there. It's our, it's our means of, kind of our lifeblood. That was, that was built by Comcast back when the franchise was renewed back in 1999. The law has changed since that time, and we have kind of a competing federal and state law. The federal law is, was in existence when we, when we did the original deal with Comcast. And at that time, we were able to negotiate for things like an INET, cable drops, various things that the city needed in terms of the franchise. Since that time now, the state law has taken effect, and it says that there should be this thing called a uniform agreement. And with the uniform agreement, as long as the cable provider comes in and agrees to pay the 5% franchise fee and an appropriate peg fee, which is for public access and education of government, then, you know, it's very difficult for a city to say no to that and ask for other things, unless you can really demonstrate why that uniform agreement doesn't meet the needs of the city. So, we know that the INET is important, and I had Laverne, and we talked a little bit whether we could have Laverne, George, just give a, kind of a real quick digest of why this INET is so important, because it appears that that's gonna be one of the primary issues going forward in this renewal. So I thought it was important that council know what that issue is as we move forward in the process.
Like CJ, the INET is our lifeline for the city. We have 16 remote buildings plus this campus. Our telephone system is relying on it. We have redundancy at the yard and other locations, so if something goes down here, the phone calls are picked up at remote locations, like by a quarter of the yard, be specific. And everything pretty much resides. We are virtualized now, so we have a data center here, so that we don't have to spend money for every location. Everything's centralized in one location. So without the INET, pretty much they're isolated with no communication, no way to get storage for their files, no way for us to back them up, no way for us to back up their files, for them to look at videos. We only have one internet connection. All the remote buildings, we've got one internet connection. Without the INET, we have to have individual internet connections, which would be ridiculous. But we're really dependent on the INET. We want to include the downtown station on the INET, and of course, because of this expiration date of March 14th, or March of 2014, rather, we can't do that. And I got some preliminary quotes from other companies. Just for downtown station would be approximately $7,000 per month, especially for one location. So if you multiply that times the 20 locations that we have, well, 16 remote locations plus this campus, the number could get outrageous. And we don't budget for the INET at all right now. Comcast maintains everything. So if we have a problem, like for example, when we had the construction work on the lodge freeway, they called me, they said, we're gonna reroute your fiber, and they did all the work for us, it didn't cost the city a penny. But the biggest thing for me is that we have redundancy with this INET. So even if we purchase that $7,000 per month, it's not gonna give me what I have now. So this is really critical for me and my department to support the city workers and the residents as well, because without this INET, they don't have a dial tone. The remote buildings will not have a dial tone, they won't have voicemail, they won't have, like I said, all the other means of firewall, they won't have an internet, so I won't be able to give them the same services that I provide, or the technology services department provides today.
So, just moving forward, we wanted to at least have a discussion that that is going to be one of the key issues as we move forward in this process, and we wanted, obviously, council to understand that. The other thing, within the public forum, there were discussions about some of the primary factors in terms of Cable 15 and the services that they provide, and that, you know, residents and obviously city departments are very tuned in to those services, and they've become, again, part of our service delivery for our residents and our businesses. So with that said, we have been meeting with Comcast, we've been talking, and what I'd like to do at this point is, because we have these kind of divergent federal and state law, it has become a pretty focused area of law. I would like to, along with the cable department, I don't mean to leave Lisa and Joanna out, the joint recommendation that we have is that we hire an attorney who specializes in cable negotiations, federal law, state law. That would be Mike Watts of the Kitsch Law Firm from Detroit. He would also be bringing in an attorney from Washington, DC, who, this is what he does across the country. So he is well aware of Comcast, he deals with Comcast in many locations, deals with INETs in many cities, and how moving forward, we can keep that on the table. And that would be Joe Van Eaton out of the Bessef and Krieger law firms. So if council were so inclined to approve that, it would be helpful if we could do, if council were inclined to do a Rule 10 to hire them, that would be fine. Otherwise, I could put it on the consent agenda next week. And again, as we go forward, and I will, we'll keep updating you between Cable and myself as to where we are in the process. I think it's also likely that we're going to do a formal needs assessment, so that'll also be something that will come back to council. We're gonna award it hopefully to some consultant, and we're gonna get, you know, more details in terms of what the needs of the community and the businesses are in terms of our cable television franchise.
Would you like to introduce to me Mike?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike Watts is here. That would be our lead attorney in the Kitsch firm. And again, he will bring in Joe Van Eaton as necessary. And if you have any questions with Mike, obviously, he would be here to answer those.
I just want to correct my name for the record, it's Laverne Walker.
I'm sorry. Do Laverne I do?
I can't. Correct.
All right.
I didn't, but I would like to respond to this. I think it's something that we need to do, and I think that's what we're gonna do it better, and probably improve it a little, and if you want to look down, I would like to say more.
Okay, we'll head.
I don't get out there yet.
Okay.
But who are you saying that, you know, I attended the public hearing, just curious to see who showed up and what they're, I think I have to say, there really weren't a lot of residents there, which sort of surprised me. But some people did articulate things that they'd like to see Comcast do. And so, is there any, they don't, are you saying that they don't have to, or just because they pay the peg fee?
Well, and that's it. I mean, everything has been so changed because of the state law. I mean, we used to have the ability to regulate, we could deal with, there were issues of residents, all that now has been taken up to the PFC, and the city really had very little actual enforcement and regulatory authority. But obviously, those would be the basis, what the residents need. And this formal needs assessment, I think, will actually be a better manner of reaching people, because in this forum, they, you know, they had to kind of come out and attend this hearing. The actual needs assessment, people will contact them where they are, and will have, I think, better information on what is it that you need, what are the issues with Comcast, what kind of things would you like to see? And all of those will form a basis for our discussions going forward with Comcast.
So there is, there is some hope that they may throw in, you know, when this all started in the eighties, you know, they just threw, they wanted the franchise, they threw tons of money.
City, the city, right, because it was use of our rights way, and so we were able to negotiate, and we were able to get things like cable drops, and we were able to get things like equipment grants and studios, and, you know, that's really been severely limited. But Mike, do you want to weigh in on that in terms of what, when we get to actual needs of the residents and the businesses, how we can, you know, form a basis of that going forward with Comcast?
And, you know, I have to interrupt my court, but we had more competition, too. You were bringing in this cable company, this one, and this one, and...
Well, we're still open for competition, it's just, you know, nobody else...
I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, just a very brief summary.
Can you give us your business address for the record?
Sure. One Woodward, 24th floor, Detroit, Michigan, 4226. Briefly, as Sue pointed out, in 2006, the Michigan legislature passed a state cable law, about 20 other states that did the same thing, pretty much at the heft of some of the providers. The impact of that has been in great question. And so, on one level, we are trying to invoke some of our federal rights, and there are some federal court cases here in Michigan that have favored local government...
some federal court cases here in Michigan that have favored local government, but the state law, as Sue points out, doesn't necessarily do that. So on one level, the federal rights provides the opportunity to do what you did back in the eighties, decide what you need, assess the community, the businesses, the residents, what they need. For instance, the INET, that is a big deal. And then bring that to Comcast and say, "We've had public hearings, we've done a study, and this is what we need." Comcast will respond, however Comcast chooses to respond, the state law doesn't help you a whole lot. So that is, that's a big change, as Sue pointed out. And I don't know how much more to get into.
No, I think that's fine, just to...
All right, Mayor Walker. Yes. I'm trying to get a sense of, is Comcast saying they do not want to provide that service anymore? Have they given us the pipe and we don't think that life is good?
Well, they said, they said that, that they would like to renew the franchise and they certainly are willing to sit and talk with us, but they are at least contemplating putting a uniform agreement in front of us under the state law. And if they do that, then that will mean that, in essence, they think that the INET obligations have gone away and any of those other obligations, that they strictly will operate under the state law, the uniform agreement. So again, and they have not put one in front of us. They have discussed it, but they haven't done it. And we are discussing and we had a meeting last week and they brought in, you know, their, their higher-ups and had a, had a, a pretty cordial conversation. I think they understand our position and what our needs are. And so we're just trying to kind of feel our way through this, but, but you really do have this interplay between the federal and the state law and, and, you know, the state law would favor them, the federal law would favor us, and that's where we are.
We're not the only city.
You're right.
So what has, what has been the practice of?
We actually are one of the first now, though, to go through a renewal. Because we were one of the first to get the franchises in the late nineties. So there'll be a lot of other cities after us. And I think, to be, to be fair and, and look at where Comcast is, they're kind of concerned, whatever they do with us, it's going to set a precedent as they move forward too.
Now, someone from Comcast, have asked me something, what did they do in Detroit that has an impact on what we're doing?
And Mike could explain that, but there is a current litigation between Detroit and Comcast. And there was a discussion about the uniform agreement and Detroit said, "We don't think that the uniform agreement addresses the needs of the city and therefore, you're trespassers in our right of way." And that's what the basis of that, of that federal court case is. That is up on appeal in the Sixth Circuit. So we're kind of waiting, you know, how is that going to play out? That will help us a lot to find out...
That also expresses the value for our needs assessment.
It, it does, it does.
So, so my question is, have we been given a cost? Have they, you know, communicated, "If you want us to maintain your INET, this is how much it'll be?"
Well, they haven't and I mean, we haven't even got to the, to the definitive answer on, are those fibers ours, the INET fibers, or are they Comcast? So, you know, we don't, we don't know what Comcast's position is on that issue.
So, my question is, we're talking about a law firm and a consultant, a need study, and then this person in DC. How much do you anticipate this practice costing and how long?
Well, we know, we know that we're coming up to March eighth. So there will either be discussions after that date and both sides will maybe continue to act under the existing agreement, that's a possibility. We know that, you know, when we did this, this franchise in the late nineties, you know, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on consultants at that time. To get a franchise and what, what we need and to address the needs, it is going to cost money. I have looked, you know, with Lisa and Joanne in terms of, you know, because remember, their department gets by a five percent franchise fee on the cable revenues. So they have money, so it isn't like we're asking general funds to subsidize this, this will all come out of cable money. And they've assured me that they can take this, correct? Tell me if I'm wrong.
Oh, that's fine, yes.
Right, they, they intend to take this for their budget because obviously, this is their, this is their lifeblood.
But it, it appears to me that the world has changed. And clearly, what we had in the past for free is no longer an option. And, you know, we always like to be the first and leaders, but there's consequences to that. We don't have institutional or best practices out there to, to lean upon. I would like for us to join with some other communities that are on a basis as they would, if we can kind of have some kind of consensus on where are we moving forward because every community is doing it, if it's possible. But I would like to know if, if we cannot, and I guess that's your question, if we cannot force them to continue to maintain our INET, IET, and it seems, that seems to be what I'm hearing, what's the best case scenario and how can we get to the best place?
Do you, you want to take a shot at that?
So, we had a federal law for twenty-some years and the fed, federal law established some guidelines and said, "States and cities, the local level, you administer it because you know best." Some of the phone companies frankly came in and they wanted to provide cable back in oh six, and so they changed the law. And what they did is they tried to take us, local government, out of the equation so they could come through with this uniform agreement with a state row, which deletes an awful lot of stuff like INETS. Now, standing that, there have been two big federal lawsuits, Dearborn and Protech, which who are founding members of, led the charge on most of this. So, so Dearborn led the charge along with Riden Township a number of years ago when Comcast tried to move the PEG channels to the digital nine hundreds, where essentially no one would see it.
Right.
In fact, the testimony in the federal court was from the federal judge who was sitting there listening. So, she said to Comcast, "So you're telling me that these people who are paying for these PEG channels will get them, but they just won't be able to see them? Is that what you're hearing?" And yes, that was the case. So we, we won that, hands down. And then Detroit, as Sue was outlining, got into one of these fights over what is the nature of our franchise? And their franchise was, depending on who you believe, was either, it was either over or in the process of being extended or is in some state of flux. And, and depending on who you believe, you either get to enforce some of your federal rights or you don't and you're stuck with the state law. That judge made a ruling, a judge lost in Detroit, that cities can reject these uniform agreements now. Reject them and go and negotiate, just like we used to. Obviously, we love that. And in fact, I wrote, and Protech supported, along with the Michigan Municipal League and others, and I'm eager to brief to, to help advise the court on all of this very complex history. So, the result is, before this Detroit or Dearborn case, it was, we're stuck with the state law. But now we've got opportunity. And what that opportunity is exactly is not entirely clear. So in this period of time, right now, is, the law is not settled. And so with that comes some risk, and we think it's Comcast's risk in large measure, and some opportunity, which may be for you and your residents, to argue for some things that maybe the state law might not allow you to do, but the federal law does. So we're, I'd love to give you a real clear answer, but I can't. That's the good news and the bad news. That help?
But I, I just think it's important that, from the city's perspective, we know what is important to us. This is very important to us, some of these issues to us and our residents and our businesses. And so we need to pursue them to the full extent of whatever rights that we have to protect what we need.
And you're not alone to your point. In Everett, Detroit, there are other communities that have INETS and have these situations and we keep in touch with them. So.
Is, is this going to be a duplicate negotiation with AT&amp;T as well?
Well, they're, they'll be coming later because remember, their franchise changed...
Two thousand and eighteen, I think it's due.
It started in two thousand and seven, ten year...
Yeah, so we've got a little time on that. We've got a little time. But I will, I will agree with you, Mary, it's a good point because, you know, there is this, this equivalent type thing. So if, if Comcast doesn't have, for example, there's an issue of PEG money and who pays what? And so whatever you do on one, and the next one coming through is going to say, "Well, you can't make needs any more than what this one did." So it's, it's, it's in our consciousness as, as well.
Yeah, you were saying five percent? I thought we, our negotiation with Comcast was for more than five percent.
We get five percent as a franchise fee. We get an additional three percent, which is PEG fee. So total, we get eight percent, but the three percent is restricted for PEG.
We didn't win that fight with AT&amp;T. The PEG, the PEG channel, that's up in the nine hundreds, or the ninety-nine channel.
Ninety-nine.
And, and the way it, and it works terribly.
It's, you have to scroll down, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that menu, has a menu, on a menu, on a menu. And consequently, I don't think anybody really pays attention. And I always use it as an argument when they call me and want me to take a package and switch all my stuff to, to AT&amp;T. And I'm, I'm going to have AT&amp;T and I tell them, "No, it's all because of the PEG channel." And I say, "I'm a one-person gang that's revolting against AT&amp;T, but I'm not going to change." But we, since we didn't win that one with AT&amp;T, I could see Comcast coming in saying, "Well, AT&amp;T doesn't have, why do we want to do it?"
Well, AT&amp;T came in before this federal lawsuit as well. This federal lawsuit is, is really, again, if, if it wasn't up on appeal, we would, you know, but it is. I mean, so Comcast appealed the, the federal judge at the, at the trial level. And so now we need to know from this next level what the, what the answers are. But I would say this, I mean, again, AT&amp;T came in under the uniform state law before this case was...
Well, and they actually, actually, AT&amp;T agreed to pay you...
Three point nine four on PEG fees.
Yeah, but not at a real channel like...
The PEG, the PEG channel where it's located is still the subject of a fight at the FCC.
Right.
It's pending. But in terms of winning fights, you won the fight with AT&amp;T and you got money from AT&amp;T, the point nine four, which accumulated all of the three things that Comcast was giving you so that there was an equivalency.
Yeah, except we didn't get the convenience.
That's a big problem with that channel, absolutely. And that fight's being waged, right?
Okay. And I was going to ask about the right of way. Does, does this impact our, our right of way? Who owns the right of way?
We still, it's still public rights of way, but what's happened is that the state then has said, basically, "You only can do this with your right of way in terms of, these providers have the right to go into your right of way." And they, they, they can, if they...
We can't prevent them from going in?
You cannot prevent them from going in.
Can we charge them? Use rate fees?
No, no.
You get what, another twenty thousand?
Well, we get, for telecommunications company, we get the metro act payment.
Right.
So that money, but of course, the net money can only be spent on rights of way issues. It can't be, for example, put into the general fund and help the city out.
Okay, no. And my last question is, do we have a strategy if Comcast says, "Okay, I'll give you the INET, but you got to give up"?
We, I, I would say we have explored a lot of possibilities and a lot of strategies and I don't, first of all, I wouldn't want to necessarily sit here and sit this juncture.
Oh, of course, I just...
But, but I would say we have. We absolutely have explored a lot of different options. We know what's important for us and for the city and for the residents and the businesses. We know what we need to keep. And so how to get there, I think we've, we've had a lot of discussions on it.
All right.
Thank you. And those that are behind me, they're coming down because they're trying to hear. Thank you very much. The next person to speak here.
I was going to unleash all the AT&amp;T questions that I've already answered.
Okay, so you're asking for a rule of ten, do you know?
If council is okay with it, otherwise I, I can put it on, you know, I just, I would like to get these folks hired because we're redoing what we need and so forth.
I know the rule.
Support.
We have a motion about that too. I was just, I was just wanting for a rule of ten favor. Any opposed?
Yeah, and we will, we will, that will come out of table department and we'll establish some kind of budget and we'll let you know what that will be, what we anticipate.
Now, we need a rule of ten higher. I mean, we need a motion.
As for retaining the Kitsch law firm of Detroit?
Support.
There's motion by Mr. Baker, supported by Mr. Martin, to retain the Kitsch firm.
And we also need...
Through which would be the, the Bessef and Krieger firm.
Unless they're going to pay for it.
I don't think they will.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Good luck. Thank you, Council.
We're always a favorite of all. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the organization, you can notice that, for the comprehensive master plan.
Good evening, Council. As you may recall, you last adopted your master plan in April two thousand and nine. And both the city ordinance and the state requires a comprehensive review every five years. Whether you amend the master plan or adopt a new one, that's part of the process. But legally, the state requires that if you're going to start the process, you send a notice of intent to all adjacent communities, public utilities, regional agencies, informing them that you're about to start the process, contact information if they want to, submit information, and, and giving them an opportunity to review the draft plan before it's adopted. There's both a forty-two and a sixty-day review period. And this is a partnership between the planning department, the planning commission, and the city council, and our adjacent community. So what I'm asking tonight is that, as a consent item on your January twenty-seventh, that you authorize us to issue a letter of intent. Then we will come back at a future date with the council and lay out a process. We think this will take about approximately twelve months. And then we'll be working with the, within the city departments and the planning commission to develop that draft. A part and parcel to this development is looking at some sub-area plans. Mr. Zorn pointed out, over here at McDonald Tower, potential for expansion of housing, continuum of care. That may be a sub-area plan. We know that at Twelve Mile and Southfield, we had a large parcel that was vacant and we had a public hearing after Walmart had come through. The city center, the DDA, and there may be other areas that are identified as sub-area plans who will have more intensive focus and discussion with the council on and include and encourage Citizens Street to come in on, on specifics. So all we're asking for tonight is that we put this item on your consent for next week. This gives us, it starts legally the process of updating the plan. We will come back at a subsequent meeting with the schedule that we'll get the blessing of the council. But it gives our staff and the commission the legal authority to start preparing the draft plan and letting our adjacent communities know that we are starting the process.
You're going to the vote ten to six, to put percent?
Well, I thought you was asking for consensus and it would go on the consent of...
Yeah.
I'll leave that with you.
Yes.
Yeah, but I have a question I want to ask, when do we go around here?
Yes.
Yes, that was...
In this piece that we skipped, on the agenda, it says, I was going to throw, it says, "The city drafted a comprehensive capital improvement plan in two thousand and eleven that aligns with a strategic goal," na 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 na, it says, "The governing body must formally adopt the CIP as required by law. Till the plan is adopted, city is not in compliance with Public Act thirty-three, two thousand and eight," which ties in with master plan. Did we sign this or did we, did we adopt it or...
No, you did not.
Adopt the capital improvement?
CIT, CIT you did not. There was no requirement. We adopted the master plan.
Well, it says, "Until the plan is adopted, city is not in compliance with Public Act thirty-three."
Yeah, I, I think you're referring to the redevelopment ready? Is that what you're reading?
It is.
Okay. And, and the state says that, I mean, they should have a capital improvement program and that it, it's a six-year plan and that each year, each subsequent year, the existing budget gets rolled in and then they adopt out five years. Now, the planning staff undertook the exercise of getting input from all the departments and we prepared a draft plan, which was the two thousand and eleven that you referred to.
It just was never formally adopted.
It was never formally adopted. And that is part and parcel, outside of the master plan, that we would like to work with the council on on a year-to-year basis. But for whatever reason at the time, work was put in because the previous one hadn't been done in six or seven years. So we, we, the good news is, about ninety percent... So we, we, the good news is about ninety percent of the work is already there and it just needs to be updated with not as much effort as it took to pull together seven years' worth of information.
The CIP plan that was put together two thousand and eleven has driven a lot of our budget. The reality is the economic constraints we've been facing on the operational end, we haven't been moving forward on a lot of our capital. But we, a lot of, the majority of the projects that are in here in the last two budgets came out of that CIP. We also use that CIP plan as a exhibit for our collective bargaining agreements and, and different arbitrations. Redevelopment ready reinforces the, a comprehensive holistic planning process that they want, you know, the message to communicate. And I'll use, for example, today, we had an email from a business on Bridge Street. And the question, and this will get to something, Mr. Baccasi, you've been chewing on public works here for a while now, what are you going to do about my street? And from a redevelopment ready standpoint, they want to hear that you're looking at all your capital needs from water mains in section thirty-one to relining sewers. But the, what we've been able to afford did come out of the CIP. Because we use what I refer to as an abbreviated budget process in Southfield the last few years because of the economic constraints we've been facing, that those haven't been fully shared with council. And, and I think as we go through the budget process this year, we'll be taking a little bit more time and looking at certain pieces of that CIP. But, you know, it speaks to buying police cars, to roads and sewer. What we've been able to do, a lot of our capital projects on roads and that have been simply driven by where we can get state grants. And we still need to figure out a strategy on our own. You know, Staff owns, owes the owner of the property on Bridge Street an answer because he's got some, some points. You know, a good CIP could help us prepare that. And it may make statements, you know, where we engage folks and say, listen, here's our Act fifty-one revenues for the last ten years. I've got a wonderful graph that Plant Moran gave us. You know, here's what's happened to those revenues. And it's an opportunity to engage folks to better understand that. But, you know, I think the budget process that we'll embark on in the next couple of months will take a little bit more greater focus at the CIP. And I certainly welcome council's formal adoption. Let me say this, you're not married to a CIP plan. And just because you have a five-year plan doesn't mean you have to do anything. It's a wish list and it gives you an annual guide of what you want to work to. But we all, you know, you can't afford everything on a wish list either.
Well, that covers everything that you said, everybody said. But still doesn't answer my question. And that, I don't think it answers my question anymore. And that is, this is, this document is about the redevelopment ready. But the CIP is only a piece of the, the whole plan of redevelopment ready. If the draft was done in two thousand eleven, why didn't we approve it? Why are we still operating with a draft? Why did we, even though, like you say, it's a wish list, we don't have to abide by, you know, we're not married to that, we're only engaged to it. Why didn't we, you know?
The administration simply needs to move the item forward. And we can work with the planning department to do that if that's the mission at this point.
Well, it says that there's a Public Act number thirty-three that we're in violation of if we don't approve it. And, you know, I don't have any money for a ticket.
I just, Mr. Zorn was right. It was put together for the immediate need of showing the city's potential liabilities and needs, going through all of these collective bargaining and arbitrations to show, you know, we have a fund balance of X and yet our CIP is, you know, X times X. So I think that's, that's probably where it's, it just kind of stopped.
But I, I. If I mention, I, I, I think the administration is more than happy to work with planning to move that forward and run it perhaps on a concurrent track. If it's been done in two thousand and eleven, I'd like to have staff done it. I, both Jim and I thought it was a well-done document, very impressive. It may need a little bit more public input. And I'd like to engage council in something as it's coming together because this has been pretty much done in a vacuum without a lot of council input. And I think we need to make that piece happen. But that's going to need, you know, need, we'll need to schedule some time and begin rolling it out, you know, perhaps by department. And maybe it's something that might answer finance committee. I could see it landing in finance or it could land in another committee, you know, committees. At the end of the day, I think all of council needs to weigh in because right now what we have as a document has been largely prepared by staff.
And that, even that, it's just that.
I think it's a wonderful starting point.
Yeah.
And we do need to finish.
I just don't want the CIP police to come down and say, you didn't do what you were supposed to do back in two thousand and one. Even if it's just on the, you know, I'm perfectly happy to be on the consent agenda. Thank you.
I just want to say on that thing, I think it's not only, it would be a good thing, I think it's, it's, it's. Because I have heard it come up, we never approved it, we never signed off on it. And for the city to report, and it is required, we need to sign off on our master plan. And that should not be a problem. It should be, that's our job, that's what we need to do.
All right, so we'll move to the next item.
Thank you. As, as the council may recall, we were here in October to talk about two amendments to the zoning ordinance. One, the clarifying the city planner's responsibilities regarding administrative approval. And as you may recall, we clarified that we are, the plan has obviously been approved by city council and there's not an increase of twenty-five percent for ten thousand square feet of the existing building. And we added a caveat that unless it's an accessory structure, you know, more than ten percent or a thousand square feet, and no zoning waivers are required, then the city planner can continue. So those were clarifications. It's scheduled for your January twenty-seventh meeting. In October, you directed to go back through the planning commission. They held their public hearings in November and made no changes to the draft language that was prepared by the city attorney in coordination with the building official and the planner. So I, I, I just wanted to bring both of these items back tonight so if there's any final questions. But there are no changes to what we discussed in October.
All right, council, we're doing the items that we like to weigh on. Okay, so we'll see it on the agenda for.
Okay, and the second amendment is regarding, if you recall, originally, we had four to five requests for hookah bars. We've had several study sessions on this item. Really, the hookah bars are a subset of tobacco specialty retail stores. And again, we came to the city council in October with some draft language. You redirected it to go through the planning commission. They didn't hold a public hearing. No further changes were made, with the exception that our staff working with the city attorney's office did some technical adjustments with some of the verbiage, took out hookah bars and referred to tobacco specialty retail. Now, I believe at the last discussion item, the city clerk asked the question about cigar bars. For example, the one that's in Copper Canyon.
Doesn't matter now.
Well, that's true, but, but it runs with the property. So they, what we found out is that there is two special licenses. There's one just for tobacco retail specialty stores. And then there's an additional one for cigar bars. Now, the cigar bars can sell alcohol, they can sell food if they're attached to another establishment, like Copper Canyon's system. The specialty, the tobacco specialty retail stores, which will include hookah bars, they're limited to only prepackaged food. So much of their income has to come from the hookah bar establishment. And as the council has directed us, we have a half a mile separation from other similar types of businesses, as well as a five hundred foot separation from religious institutions, residential, and so forth. And the map that we have provided here shows that there are four existing cigar bar locations, including one hookah, and four potential. So we, we originally started with twenty-seven potential. We've got it down to no more than four potential sites based on the parameters of being a special use in the RS, regional shopping, RC, regional center, or B three, and then meeting all those other parameters. So we think we meet our reasonable test as far as having our fair share. But we are restricting the total number of, of these types of establishments in the future. And we have all of the special use provisions, hours of operation, separation, crime prevention, and then all the other subjective ones that are part of the special use. So we feel like we're pretty well protected. Our moratorium was established through the first of March. So we would like to bring this for final consideration at the council next week.
Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, twenty fourteen council schedule.
Um, thank you. Council, before you, this evening, I've proposed recommendations for the two thousand fourteen council meetings. We included two meetings per month, once we do the hall, one regular, similar to the schedule that we had in two thousand thirteen. The dates before you have all the reviews with reference to conferences, holidays. And this does not prohibit you from adding additional reviews to council votes. So it suggested that council also be scheduled and consider it. If you've got any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Now, this, this is on the city calendar already. Should this come before council, before the city calendar's prepared? Just in future years? The future?
I believe on the city attorney's request, the charter states that it shall be presented to council at the first.
That's the open meeting.
Sorry, the open meeting. At the first, their first regular meeting. Unfortunately, there would have been discussion of this in the past in the calendar. Unfortunately, it was presented earlier. So this was presented to the city administrator and I believe this was also presented at a council president's meeting back in, was it September or October when I started working on it? It was right before the election, so I knew we were going to be bombarded. I said, what do you think? And we made a few tweaks based on four-day work weeks. We tried to accommodate, you know, everything we could think of. And then also. Yeah, so.
And if I could throw it.
But maybe we could in the future, I, I mean, I don't know if we could tentatively bring it forward, but the open meeting, the act, so this has.
Well, it doesn't have to be done by that, by the tenth day after the meeting. So I think you've got some flexibility. But I, I just wanted to bring it technical because this says, the open meeting act says you have to have it approved within ten days of your, your first meeting. Well, when we prepared this, this would have been our first meeting, so we could have gone to the twenty-seventh. I'm concerned now because we had a meeting last Wednesday. It was a special meeting, but it was a meeting. And the open meeting didn't say whether it's special or regular.
It didn't mean it's special.
Ten days, ten days would take us to Sunday. So I think to be safe, maybe if we could consider another rule ten.
Over the road channel?
Is there support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I moved at the calendar that presented us tonight as far as the council meetings. Now, meetings that will, that's at seven o'clock, will be approved.
Support. There's a motion by council, the time is supported by council, we must get through the twenty fourteen council meeting schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a chair. I, this goes through the chair to the city administrator. Wouldn't you have the proposed dates for the budget? Because we already agreed we're going to need more time for the budget this year.
Karen Alley, who assisted in putting the budget together just today, sent me dates from the last, the model what was used for Mr. Herschel's last two years. And I'd like to sit down with the finance committee and put those dates together. But I, I, I'm thinking we will mimic that. Part of my thought process, though, is that it's a little more intense for certain other departments. Perhaps police and fire state status call, I'm just making this statement. But there are a couple of areas that I've heard council express a concern. Public Works, Water, Sewer, where it's a little bit more time focused on that. Parks and Rec is still living off of fund balance. I think that deserves some, a little bit more intense, a little more intense workout. But I'd like to put that together. I'm thinking, the email came late this afternoon and I was in a meeting. So I wanted to look at that schedule. But I wanted to start with, what was done, it looks like was last done that way almost six years ago. And that we would mimic that as a starting point. I don't know if there's an appetite for, for council to perhaps do some things off-site. You know, for example, the night we're looking at Public Works that we maybe need and in the Public Works building, have a public meeting there. So we could, you know, the meeting would begin with perhaps a tour of inventory of equipment machinery. And we would have charts, stock on age, and kind of a precursor, a little bit. And then we'd get into each of the budgets, water and sewer, roads, and a touch of water, sewer, highway, streets, communications. It'd be maybe one night, three and a half hour intense workout.
And, and this, I just want to put this on the table, and I know I'm getting off, off topic here. But I really want us to dive a little deeper into the requirements for Parks and Rec. This comes up every year at the budget time, how they're required to pay the city a fee for.
Facilities.
For facility. I, I, we really need to look at that model. And that's one of the major drivers.
The facilities matrix is a stumbling point for both the library, Ed, Parks and Rec. However, as I say, you know, that is how those departments have historically paid. But the fact of the matter is, and this will be tied directly to the CIP, I can tell you right now, facilities has about four and a half million dollars worth of roof work that needs to be done. And we've been spending only about two point two million a year in all of facilities operational. So there's some things that need to, need to be looked at. I, with Plant Moran, with Alicia Davis and I, as we, as each year as we go through the audit, I've asked certain questions. I think the facility matrix does need to be tampered with. And I also believe that there were some things done in our energy audit that need to move to implementation because they're low-hanging fruits that have savings that could pay for and could improve.
So council, so that you know, Parks and Rec and library pay into, like, they are contracting from the city. But when it comes to their needs, they have no ability for priorities. Like, if, if they need something fixed in Parks and Rec, it goes into a hamper and whatever the priority is by the city, and they may not get what they need. And that has been the, you know, if we're paying for it, we should have responses. And, and sometimes, like you said, they're short-staffed. This isn't happening, but they're paying the service.
I, I think the library and Parks and Rec as a customer, I've heard them express frustration.
Yeah.
We're not getting what we're paying for. And I think it would benefit all parties to go through the full matrix. The biggest part of it is our utility cost. And again, that turns your media focus to what we'd be doing on the energy consumption arena. So. That's a very intense workout, but it does need to happen as well.
Remember, they're going to confuse it with hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
True. But there's, you know.
Yeah, I have two items to bring you for full council and a president. One of them is, there was talk before the governor's state of the state address about a budget surplus in Lansing, to the tune of maybe one or two billion dollars, I believe. And then in his state of the state address, there was anticipation that he would say how he was going to use that surplus, including potentially a tax relief to Michigan residents. He didn't announce anything, but he is expected to announce something at his budget address in February. So time is of the essence on this, where the city of Royal Oak and other communities, and come my way through the Michigan Municipal League, is. and come my way through the Michigan Municipal League, is introducing resolutions to bring that money, or at least a portion of that money, to restore cuts to revenue sharing to local communities. The last time Southfield took a stand and sent something up Lansing was against the personal property tax repeal. And from that, it went through a huge workout because other communities banded together with us to, you know, put it on the ballot in August and to rework the formula. So I have Royal Oak's draft resolution, just a pass out for everyone to read. It's two pages.
And if I may, we actually, Diana Williams has this.
Great.
We took Royal Oak's resolution, and we've made those changes.
Yeah. Through the chair, I would hope we could even put this on the council agenda for Monday and not take it through a committee, only because we, I think we should take a stand before the governor and his team rolls out a budget presentation in February. The strength in numbers worked to a degree with the personal property tax repeal legislation, and I think if we take a stand saying, you know, bring the money that's been cut to local communities, back to the local community so that we can administer the program services here in City Hall, I think that he'll get the message, and his administration will get the message before a budget is presented, before the Senate and the House.
What's that? Wasn't that brought up by a Republican?
Yeah, yeah, it was. It was.
Tax relief?
It was. It was. So he was supposed to, the anticipation, he was going to give specifics. You know, "We have a surplus, here's my vision for it." Instead, in the State of the State address last week, he said, you know, "We're working it out, we'll have a full plan by February's budget address." So that's why now is the time that communities around the state are taking action and picking up this proposal. So our next meeting would be the next meeting before his presentation.
And administration, we'll have a vote 27?
Great. Yeah, oh, the second item, sorry about that. The second item was, one of the things that was on Mr. Scherr's plate was the bid Southfield project. And I was just, I just wanted to keep that ball moving, because I think we had left it at potential, incentives is a bad word, potential program to make sure that, you know, when Southfield corporations bid for services or vending through the city, that we can get maybe special consideration to Southfield corporations first. And we, as a council, said we would have the administration draft something and then decide what committee to send it to, whether economic development or legislative. I just wanted to make sure that was still fresh on everyone's mind.
I, as you said, one item, and I would like to put back on the table, reviewing to see whether or not we can go for a bond issue over a period of time for our roads. We met with bonding council early in last February before the election, and had some verbiage already for a proposition to be on the ballot in election time, and it was not put on. But I'll tell you, these roads, I was talking to Mike Kamowski, I said, "I've never seen a road pop up like they have," but I guess when you have a continuance of sub-zero weather, the frost goes deeper, and because it got so deep, it's just exploding everything in its way. And we've got holes so badly in this city right now, and if I don't even ask Mike if there's any way that they can get out and put something in these potholes. I know that, I mean, you get these holes anymore, and, I mean, I lost my hubcap on one of them already. You get that, the area that came back from Providence Hospital between Rutland and, where's the Jam Hudson Drive, before you get on the expressway, you go a little far. I mean, yeah, but I mean, it is everywhere, but I'm just saying, you can't even drive that much. It should be closed off, I mean, because it's that bad. But I mean, you have 12 mile, even, you know, where the sewer is in the middle of the road in front of our park. You hit that sucker, and you, you know, that's where I lost my hub. It's just terrible. You buy the post office there, holes, all the roads are just going to pods.
One right up Evergreen that I keep pounding this time, and I should know better, but...
I guess I'm just making a point that, that, you know, it takes time to, to get this thing out of the ballot, but it takes time to make plans and get contracts and all that. You're talking about a year and a half, two years away right now to really doing any major destruction. Now, I mean, never been roads going, but that's the only thing that you're going to see, because there's no money in the majors, and there's no money in the locals. It's all gone.
Now, president, the administration's certainly having to look at that. We have some preliminary economic modeling of our roads. Public Works Engineering has this Pacer system where our roads are rated. And using that rating system, we've been able to engage OHM to do some economic modeling, and that's another item that we can present to council. We have preliminary numbers of what it might look like to put a plan together. Very challenging, but I think since the meetings prior to the election, that modeling has come together rather nicely, and we could have OHM come in and present that as well.
Yes, speaking of roads, as I was dodging paths one day, something went through my mind, and that is, Southfield roads get beat up often. And part of our, part of our marketing and part of our bragging rights is, we have 70,000 people live in Southfield, and during the day, we have 170,000 by 150,000 people, which means that our roads are traveled much heavier than other communities. And just a, you know, just a small example, 100 people from Detroit come to work in Southfield, 100 people from Iowa come to work in Southfield, 100 people from Farmington Hills, that's 300 people on our roads, but only 100 in there. Maybe our roads need to have a different formula for construction, more similar to an expressway than normal majors or roads. And I'm talking about the heavily traveled roads. Maybe they, maybe they need to be redesigned so they last longer, because we're always talking about fixing our roads. And it's, you know, our roads are traveled as heavily as an expressway.
Let me answer one thing, and then I'll stop. But, you know, a lot of people think that all these roads belong to us.
I know.
And, and, you know, 11 mile, 9 mile, 11 mile, 15 mile are only east-west, and then we have, you know, Inglewood Franklin Beach, and Evergreen is ours. Everything else belongs to somebody else. And, and they're not doing any maintenance. I mean, I get snowplow. And, and, you know, and, I don't know, I'd love to take all my roads and make them all Southfield roads, and get the money for them and do it right, because there's no maintenance on them. And you're looking at, at even Lasher Road, it was just done the other day, last year, wasn't it?
Year and two years?
Yeah, they're already cracking. And, and, you know, you see, between the lines, they're right where the seams are. You see chunks coming out already, so they're going to have to put coat pack in a brand-new road.
One other thing you'll see in the OHM modeling is the hierarchy of roads. Those have a major, local, which ones are eligible for federal aid. And the federal aid form that amazes me when I see where we sit in, part of the scoring, though, and then I'll use Evergreen Road from H9 mile, volume is part of that scoring. And when those roads are done, so you take the condition of the road, the volume, so the volume, there is a little bit of reward, but the problem is, there's just not enough money. And in Oakland County, you get $16.5 million to spend out, and they've got an ungodly amount of roads that were competing for it. Some of them don't have any money. That's the part that I'll beat my head on.
Yeah.
But when you see the last, the, just for, the one four-hour job gets done each year, a complete reconstruction, one, and then you'll see like 15 resurface jobs, but that volume drives that. And, you know, that's, but it's, there's just simply not enough money. And I think, you know, the governor, the plan he had last year would have started to provide some relief, but it still doesn't get enough money. The plan last year focused on the state's needs. It doesn't talk about the county's needs. And that number, you know, needs to go up 10, 10, 10 times. Needs to be 160 million before we start seeing some real difference.
Well, you know, the Act 51 money is getting less and less, and every time they raise the CAPE standards, there's fewer gallons of gas being sold, which means our, even if we weren't in an economic hardship, we'd still have less money in the Act 51.
All right, we'll move to communications portion. The first person that wants to be recognized is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening.
My name is Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. For those residents that need to reach me, my telephone number is 248-346-0439. I am just a phone call away, and I will always be an independent voice for Southfield. Yesterday was the 29th Annual Peace Walk presented by the Martin Luther King Task Force here in Southfield. This is the biggest peace walk in the state of Michigan, the first of its kind, right here, demonstrating how this city has been progressive in the past. This city will shatter that reputation by coming regressive. This council is attempting again to limit free speech during the communications portion of the agenda, from five minutes to three minutes, maybe less. This is done under the guise of shortening the length of the council meeting, when in fact, some members of this council wants me and others to go away. Why? This city does not want eyes on Southfield or even checks and balances. This city does not want to be transparent or accountable for anything, not even the condition of Evergreen Road right here in front of City Hall. I believe that if you seriously want to shorten the meeting, I'm going to give you five alternative suggestions, and you can write them down if you want. The first one is to eliminate all the pomp and circumstance during the presentation portion of the agenda. Enough with giving each other awards or giving basketball teams awards because your son is the coach. This information can be put in the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets for free. Instead of pageantry, take care of the people's business and not your narcissism. Remember, the residents are at the top of the organizational chart. Number two, eliminate reading the consent agenda, which is really a routine administrative detail. For example, residents do not want to know about a purchasing contract that was awarded to the paper group of Union Town, Ohio, in the sum of $52,000-plus thousand dollars for one year. And the residents want to know if the bidding process was open and fair. In the famous words of the city clerk, "This information is always available online." End quote. Number three, move the communications portion, portion of the agenda directly after the consent agenda. Mr. Lance fought very hard for this many years ago, and obviously for the right reasons. That is, no resident should have to wait hours to speak to this council. I purport this council uses that tactic to discourage people from speaking up and speaking out about this city. If you have compassion for the petitioner's time, their lawyer's time, have compassion for the residents who live, work, dine, support events, and pay taxes in this city. Number four, during the council portion of the agenda, stop your grandstand, grandstanding. Refrain from rehearsing your long-winded reelection speeches. If you want the residents to know that you're doing other speaking engagements outside of council activities, put it online, as the city clerk would say. The free trips, free food, free gas that this council consumes going to those meetings, the residents really want to know, are you bringing back any information that will enhance their quality of life? And finally, number five, amend council's rules of procedure by adding a Cinderella clause, that all future council meetings will adjourn before midnight. And Ms. Joan Seymour, you and several of your colleagues seem to be obsessed with where I live. Joan Seymour, I challenge you to ask every elected official at this table, an elected official that works for this city that requires residency, where do they live? And is there a P R E in Southfield? Now, I'm disappointed about the fact that Shelley Friedman and the council president does not talk about the fact that there's a Black Chamber of Commerce. Now, Ms. Jordan, you came before the Black Chamber, talking about you were going to use your position on council to help the Black Chamber, to bring them to the table. Have you done that? Thank you.
All right, the next item, the next person, I can move this show to you. Yeah, hold one minute. 40 seconds, 30 seconds.
That'll be good.
I can do it in 30. Mr. Gunther, you have a five-minute, you have a paper clip.
My name is Harmon Gunther. I drive the 19101 in Sprouse. If you're, I'm wondering what new body part I had added. I had a cap put on my shoulder to give me more authority on my weight shoulder. I already had a procedure done on my left, so I have two, four, six. Hopefully, I'm done.
My T-shirt, that's made in my hometown, where I was born.
My tongue provided that for me for Christmas presents, and it's stuck to work, you know, in a rhythm tonight. It's called brown light, or brown light. The reason, I must be threatened for punishment, but it seems like almost a year ago, we were in front of the city council in the other chamber, asking for Economic Development Committee. The first couple of meetings we attended for that committee, we had quite a few people there, residents, developers, council members. It was really hoped that something would come out of that committee that would be proactive in bringing development into the city, not just across the street, but obviously, my favorite section, 11 at the 12th in Southfield, but also across the street, where Coral Gables, uh, sorry, what was the name of it?
Old Corral.
Gold Corral was supposed to go, anything else. This year, I found out inadvertently that there was a committee meeting, and there were only three members. And these three members are not proactive. I hate to say it, but they're not. They're reactive. And I don't like, you know, a lot of our residences are tired of the council and economic development people being reactive. You're supposed to be making cold calls and bringing new development in, not having developers call you and asking, "Oh, what you got?" 11 Mile and Lasher Road, that old Kroger store's been active for many years. Something should be done about that.
I'm sorry.
The farmer jack, I'm sorry. You know, and there are a lot of residents who, you know, do not watch the council meetings or not as active as I, you know, would like to see a proactive council, a proactive Economic Development Committee, like we had. The original committee had developers part of it, it had council people part of it, it had city administrators part of it, it had residents part of it. Who did it disappear to? Down to three? Thank you.
Just to clarify, Mr. Gunther, there has not been a formal Economic Development Committee meeting. Just to clarify that.
Okay.
And there will be one.
Okay, thank you.
Next person, let me English. She's not here. The next person is, who's her, I'm not sure. Nancy. And if you could give us your address, and we have five minutes for the record.
20, oh, Luther Harnett, 20670, Kissington Court, Southfield, Michigan, apartment 204. Phone number 248. Oh, okay. I would like to thank the council for this opportunity to see us. I'm asking for the council permission to purchase vacant land on Prosper for my offer. If the council does not like or satisfy with that, I had chosen an alternate site, which was Westland. It was on a connotation list, and it did not get sold. And I was wondering, is there any written rule or order that states the city cannot sell land unless then you assess value? sell land for less than the assessed value?
Okay, this is your opportunity to present what you'd like to have. We all know.
I brought information. And I have spoken with Mr. Zorn, also regarding this matter. As you can see, there were properties that were sold on Sunny Point, and there were properties that were also sold on Sargent. And if you take a look at the last two pages, that were on the county auction list, which were the first one and the last one, which I circle, those sold for five hundred dollars during the county auction. The last one, on the last page, which I marked a star by, is one that was on the auction list as the alternate site that I was asking for. If you guys do not agree on the offer, you know, I had offered the city for the land was a thousand dollars, even though it was expected twenty-three dollars, which I understood. That's why I was asking, is there any rule regarding it being sold at the assessed value? I was hoping to get some kind of rule from the council on whether or not I could go forward, go forward with the purchase. If so, maybe you might have a council meeting, not to get an answer.
I'm going to defer to asking the administrative, Mr. Zorn.
If I may, Madam President, Mr. Harnett originally approached us in December about this piece of property. Our first response was to check what the property was worth. It's on our tax rolls out, if you'll help me out, for thirty-two thousand. It's on our email, first one, too, was twenty-three-five, twenty-three thousand five. The offer's worth a thousand dollars. What I said to Mr. Harnett is, I'd like to sit down and meet with you, but, you know, Campbell, I think the offer's a little light. And my emails and back and forth, I suggest that, you know, one way might be to enter into development agreement. But procedurally, he called, like, I think the first contact was around December tenth?
I believe so.
And my, my response was, "Mr. Harnett, you know, I'd like to sit down, chat with you about this, a couple of things. One is the tax reverted property. I wanted him to understand the ramifications behind the tax foreclosure, particular securing title and issues. He indicated that he was planning on paying cash for the house and such, and all that's fine, but one day he'll want to sell that house, and he needs to make sure there's not a clouded title."
If I may intercede, I had no intention of, I was honest.
Well, you don't, but the fact that the title's not clear, someone may come, you could build a house, and someone could come out of the blue and say, "I have an interest in this land." So clearing the title, I wanted to chat with you about that. There's title issues in these tax foreclosed properties. The other item was, frankly, we had time. If he were to buy the property before the end of the year, it would be on the tax rolls in twenty-fourteen. So we got the question of the late offer, and I think in these carcels, we should be looking at some type of development agreement. If he's proposing to build a house, let's strengthen the city's position, so we know the square footage, what the exterior elevation looks like, and we can memorialize that in development agreement. But I do feel anyone buying these tax foreclosed homes needs to be counseled relative to, number one, before you put any money into it, clear the title, go through that quiet title process. I'd hate to see anyone put money into a home, and then someone else come back and claim an ownership right.
Could I jump in as well? I mean, I think the issue is that, you know, those properties have now been used by the city after they failed to be purchased at the tax sale for Oakwood County. Once they're city property, we have no legal right to dispose of those properties for less than a fair market value. Otherwise, you're giving away city property, and it has to be at a certain value, because these are, these are public funds, it's public money, it's public property. And so that's a piece of it as well, is that, you know, you, they have, there has to be some determination that what's being offered is a fair market value for those properties.
If it's on a fair market value, the property that was on the auction list on the last page was one that was west land, two-three, two-zero, two-zero, four-three-five, west land. That was on the auction list for five hundred dollars. That was the alternate site that I was asking for. Now, it was on the auction list, I did some investigation about it, the city took it back after it did not sell at the county auction. Now, my thing was, if it didn't sell at the county auction, I'm coming to you guys offering more than what the minimum bid is for this alternate site. I'm not understanding, without any rules here, or I'm asking all the rulers, if you can't sell, can you do this? Why are we running into so many?
Well, when the county, when the county, the county holds two tax sales. The first one is in August, and the amount that you have to bid is the amount of the back taxes. If it doesn't sell at that, it goes to a second auction in October. At that time, the county is free to put whatever amount they want on it as a minimum bid. And apparently, that's kind of what you're describing. But it didn't sell then, and so when it comes to the city, it now becomes public city property. And we have a duty and obligation, because it is public property, to dispose of it fairly and equitably. And so that's, I think, what's also been a, you know, I know there was discussion at one point, this may be even hiring a real estate broker.
We actually have an R and P out.
To put these properties out in the market, and, you know, let them be sold under, where anyone that wanted to offer, had that opportunity. So I think that's a piece of it as well.
And I think we could certainly build a case for a discounted price if it were tied to a development agreement, where I could say, you know, this, a home will be built by X amount of time, the potential taxable value will be this, so no longer have the maintenance and the carry costs associated with this piece of property. But I, I need, we need to sit down and engage that process. And initially, I do think a thousand dollars is too light. There's also the integrity of our appraisal system, because every other piece of property in that neighborhood starts at similar, comparable values. And if we were to, we've got to be very careful in how we craft that argument.
All right, Mr. Dunster, how you know the experience of this? You need to know that the city of Southfield and every other taxing jurisdiction lost money on this property. That's why it ended up in the sheriff's sale, or the treasurer's sale. So there were, I don't know this particular property, but many of them have thousands of dollars in back taxes before they're seized by the treasurer. So stuff has already lost money on this property. And one way of getting it back is by selling it at a higher price than what we paid for it. We did something very similar with the Ramada Hotel, which we took, we took it for one price, and sold it for another to get our, to get our money back. The other thing is, I think it, it really comes on the ethical line to make, this thing, it should go to public, it should be advertised to the whole public. Where, where the city council or the city administration make a deal with an individual, that really can be, become a very ethical issue. It's a fair way to do it, is to engage a realtor and put all the surplus properties on the market and have, let people bid on them, and, and go that way. To, I'm not comfortable, and, you know, I'm glad you want to invest in Southfield. I'm not against what you want to do, but ethically, the city council shouldn't be making deals, individual deals with people. It's a very slippery slope, and the next thing you know, we're going to get sued because of, or accused of some underhanded thing. This really needs to go to a, a, a public sale, and let anybody who's interested bid on it.
Through a realtor.
I just want to say that we need to establish a policy, because I don't know of deals for me to ask. I'm not aware of the policy, the procedure. I really feel the council, now that we know about this, that the council should set, so we all have an expectation. And so if anyone comes to us, this is the approved by council process. And if we don't have that, it's becoming very, very simple. I agree with what's been said, but if we don't have a process.
Yeah, the other thing that, you said that you had no intention of selling this property if you, if you desire. And that's your, that's your position. If we were free to make these deals, the next person that came along might say, "Hey, I got this piece of property for a thousand dollars, and I'm going to sell it for five thousand dollars, or ten thousand, or eleven thousand dollars, and make money on the, on the city," when we should have tried to offset some of the losses that we've already had. So I think we, as the mayor says, we need a, a process so that we're fair to everyone. And it's unfortunate that, I'm sure that you feel that you're being picked on, but I think in the long run, it's better for the whole city, the council, the transparency, and I, I think we do need a, a process so that we're fair to everyone. And so the next person that comes in can't get a better deal than you or a worse deal than you got.
But just hearing that the council will refer this to our administration, basically to, number one, we already have our R and P out for a real estate agent to handle.
And the administration, they need more guidance for, from the council. And my first position would be to sell these properties with the intent of developing, entering into development agreement to increase the taxable yield. I mean, we could sell the property and let it split, sit for years, but if we can enter into agreements where there'll be a bill, get these properties back into productive use, one line at a time. And I'll use, for example, there's a parcel off of North of Twelve Mile, that the one owner wants it simply to double his, his lot size. When you look at it, the entire rhythm of that neighborhood sits on one acre parcels. For someone to have a two acre, I'd like to sell that parcel clearly with the intent that someone will, within the next amount of time, develop it, and even perhaps explore entering reverted clause, that if it's not built in a certain amount of time, it comes back to us, and that they demonstrate the economic needs to build the home as well.
And then a policy and a process.
And if there's a consensus towards some type, tying it to a development agreement, we would go through these properties and identify which ones have redevelopment potential and move it in, move it in. Frankly, there's some parcels I think we should be possibly looking to land bank, because if you look at what's around there, they have greater potential in the future.
That's not something that's going to be decided. I mean, that's such complicated, I'd like to spend some time to really, really try and not try to rush it through.
I'd like to say one more thing. The advice that the administrator gave you about having a title search, or attorney, about having a title search, let me give you a real example. There's a piece of property at Edwards and Southfield Road, it used to have a building on it that burned, this flat piece of property. And Golden Corral, the restaurant, came in and wanted to buy that piece of property and put up a restaurant there. We were all set to do that, except the neighbors didn't want a restaurant there. But had we sold that to Golden Corral, they couldn't have built a restaurant, and nobody knew that, until we did a title search and found out that back in nineteen forty-seven, there was a deed restriction put on that piece of property that said, "You can't build a restaurant." So, what, the advice that the administrator was given, giving you about make sure that you have a clear title on any property that you're going to buy, is to your advantage, because if there's any hiccup, and it does, that can go all the way back to the original or that would prevent you from doing what you want after you spent the money.
If I may speak, I took his advice. I had also checked into that. I had talked to Centennial about finding out about the title. They gave me a price of two hundred and forty dollars to do that, so I did check into that. But I was not about to put any, any money into anything.
Understand.
Until I had talked to council. Now, I was advised also that this was going to be, had to be a council decision from Mr. Zorn. He would take this to council, and this would have to be a council decision, because he wasn't able to make the decision on his own.
And that's, that's what, yeah. But, but I want to, also want to say, when a person comes to the microphone and lays a new problem on us, or a concern on us, they really shouldn't expect us to answer until we get all the information. So when, when it comes to us, you have a, you have a concern, that you've studied and you understand what the concern is. To some of us, it was a brand-new issue. So for you, for us to say, "Oh, that we ought to do this or that," we don't know all of the facts. That's why we said we can't give you an answer tonight.
I was going to ask for an answer tonight.
Okay.
I said I would wait for an answer from the council, maybe by next week or whenever.
But basically, what we're saying is, we're deferring it to our city, their city administrator, to come back with how we're going to dispose of vacant properties. So that may not happen for, we can't even tell you when it's going to happen. So, we can't even tell you we're going to sell it to you, because we've heard our cable that we want to be fair in the vacant properties, and making sure that everybody is given an opportunity to know about it and properties, but we can't give you a decision tonight, but it is with our administrator.
Can we pick two real estate companies and, uh, properties?
We can finalize and bring that to council. Move it up to February. Liz Law was thinking we move on that in March, but with this, we will bring it, move it forward in February.
We should have the process of looking at, it should be a process to go on and open.
Yeah.
Are there, is there anything else to be brought to the council review?
Yeah. You got one more?
Oh, you're right. Mr. Gerard.
But you got none, right?
No, we have all right.
Oh, she took that off?
We had it.
No, the three minutes?
Is it on yours?
No.
Oh, okay.